Good afternoon. This is the Thursday, July 20th, 2017, meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. All members are present, so the quorum has been established. Is there anyone who intends to address the commission today from the audience? Okay. Do you just want to raise your right hand and swear that you will tell the truth as you know it to the Athens City Planning Commission? Thank you very much. Disposition of minutes. Are there any amendments to that or additions? Okay. I'll abstain from voting. All in favor?
I move to adopt.
Okay. A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And three yeses and two abstentions. Cases. Case number 17-14, Title 43, Wireless Telecommunications Review, 39 Water Tower Drive, modification. Mr. Saroy?
Yes. Good afternoon, we're introducing public. This is Title 43, Wireless Communications Review for 39 Water Tower Drive, OU Ridges in Athens. It's a modification only, and in prior agreement, modification doesn't need communication, so we can proceed. The synopsis is Verizon Wireless is planning to upgrade and add equipment and new antennas on an existing tower at the 150-foot self-supporting structure. The modifications are similar to a previous request of case 1603 dated 19 May 2016, which modifications were conducted at the 149-foot existing platform. This new request involves modifying the platform again at 149 feet level on the tower. No changes to the height or the footprint of the tower will be made. Verizon Wireless is proposing to modify the platform as follows: removing and replacing nine panel antennas and replacing them with nine similar-sized antennas; adding six new remote radio heads; adding one new over-voltage power distribution box; adding one hybrid cable; removing and replacing the mounting hardware. Proper supporting documents were provided for the structural analysis of the wind and foundation requirements. After review of the documents, it was determined that they met with the code departments under Title 43. The facts: the applicant is Verizon Wireless, Debbie Bootser, agent, is the agent, 9477 Wailers Cove Drive, Mentor, Ohio. The property owner is the State of Ohio slash Ohio University. The tower owner is American Tower Corporation, 10 Presidential Way, Wolverne, Massachusetts. Site location is 39 Tower Drive. Architect is not applicable. The zoning is E1. The estimated value of improvement is $55,000.
Thank you, Mr. Saroy. Are there any questions or comments?
I did send this on to Ohio University, David Everian from Legal, who responded back that Ohio University had no issues with this, the property owner.
Anything else? Would anybody care to make a motion?
I so move.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Next would be case number 17-15, a minor subdivision lot split, Madison Heights, diversified properties. Mr. Saroy?
Yes, the applicant emailed me on Wednesday, and I'll submit this. It's based on our evaluation of the issues causing the refusal of our most current development plan. We respectfully ask the diversified properties request to the meeting with the planning commission on July 20th to table. It has been our intention from our initial purchase of the property to develop in such fashion that it would provide a positive outcome for the city of Athens. We are actively considering other options that will provide a more simplistic acceptance and suitability for the properties. Respectfully, Jim Blue, managing member, diversified properties.
Mr. Saroy, do you have any follow-up comment on that?
None at all.
That speaks for itself?
Speaks for itself.
Anybody from the commission? Okay. Thank you very much.
Motion to table.
Well, I could, the only comment I could have is the refusal was based as submitted as a subdivision, correct?
Subdivision, correct.
Okay. So there were multiple?
There were multiple lot splits on the property, which was causing some difficulty concerns.
Okay. So we'll make a motion to table then?
I so move.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Communications, SoulSmart. Sure. Care just to come up to the podium and please state your name and address here in Athens or the name of your company?
Absolutely. My name's Sarah Conley-Baloo. My address in Athens is 12190 Pete Smith Road, actually Athens County. I am the Executive Director of Upgrade Ohio and recently hired also as the SoulSmart advisor. And today I'm going to walk you through an introduction to SoulSmart. Before I begin, how much time do I have? Just anywhere?
Probably about 10 minutes.
Okay. Great. Sounds good. So the SoulSmart program was, it's a DOE funded, I'm sorry, Department of Energy-funded project program. And let me just forget how to get my buttons here in a moment. SoulSmart is a designation program for communities to identify improvements that they might be interested in making to reduce the soft costs of solar development. And this program is currently serving, they're currently working with 300 communities across the U.S. We are the only rural community that applied to SoulSmart and were accepted to participate. So we're kind of a vanguard in our region and nationally, too. The program essentially is designed to bring a community through a designation process so that they can achieve either a bronze, a silver, or a gold designation. And it's step by step, using some of the best practices in the country in order to examine and then consider ways to improve and streamline both planning, zoning, and development, permitting, and inspection, so that solar development can happen seamlessly in a community. It's a six-month program. I will be serving four communities. Let's see, I have that on a slide here. Let's kind of go through it slide by slide here. Again, the goals of the program are to designate communities across the country. We are among those who are seeking a silver designation. And kind of to give you the background here, SOPEC's member communities, of which Athens City is one, submitted a checklist of, let's say, interests or potential opportunities for improvement. And when the Solar Foundation, who administers the SoulSmart program, reviewed the city's goals, they identified some really key opportunities and recognized that the city could get to a silver designation in the six-month period if they work through certain steps. So we'll discuss that. This kind of goes into the three designation categories. It's my goal to, at the very least, achieve a bronze status for the city of Athens. But it's not much of a leap beyond that to get to the silver status. So I do hope that we can, we can reach the silver status. In order to receive the bronze status, we need to complete a solar statement, which actually was completed upon application. Again, that sort of identifies what your goals are. The next step would be a permitting checklist, which identifies what permitting barriers might exist for solar development, and then looking at ways to improve those and choosing whether that makes sense and at what timeline, as well as reviewing the zoning barriers that might exist. So if we walk through that, and we also look at some of our special focus categories, which includes community engagement or solar rights, things like that, then we can achieve that bronze status with, I think, not much effort, all things considered. And then if we want to move into that silver category, which it seems we do, we may consider other, other options. This solar byright, we can talk about whether that makes sense, also inspection trainings and things to that effect. So it's a process and certainly does not, you know, the goal of this program, and my goal, is to assist you in whatever way I can to really kind of identify options and opportunities and provide you with the resources that you would need. Beyond that, there are, there's a process of points verification. My role is to take the progress that we're making, submit it to a panel of reviewers, who then say, yeah, it looks like they've accomplished that, that step. They award us points for that. At the end of the day, our goal is 265 points, I do believe, and, and that certification or that designation. The benefits to SoulSmart include a recognition on their website, as well as the city, hopefully the city's website would carry the recognition as well, opportunities for press, as well as this fancy plaque that looks kind of like a solar panel, and then a continued ongoing technical support provided by the SoulSmart network that we were part of. I'll talk specifically about the four communities I'll be working with. City of Athens, as well as the Village of Amesville, are on the standard pathway towards designation. Athens County and the Village of Somerset are doing a modified pathway, reason being that the city, or I'm sorry, the county and the village both do not have zoning codes that would be potentially barriers to solar development, whereas in the city and also to some extent in the Village of Amesville, there are some improvements that could be considered. The six categories that the city has identified as interesting to review includes permitting, planning, zoning, and development, community engagement, inspection, and construction codes. Each of these breaks out into long lists of criteria, but that's sort of the high-level overview of the four communities I'll be working in. Again, quickly to say that SoulSmart is a program of the U.S. Department of Energy's Sunshine Initiative, and my understanding is that the Sunshine Initiative, their goal is to reduce barriers to solar development through many different initiatives. So this is the one that they have applied towards governments. This just demonstrates the large network that we're working with. I recently attended a week-long training for this program and was educated by representatives of each of these organizations. And it's really, this is a very top-notch, nationally-recognized program. We're really, we have at our fingertips some very gold-standard solar research, development, and experts. So that's exciting. To kind of dive into, I'm going to pass that one, what this pathway to silver designation looks like for the city of Athens. We have, as I mentioned before, completed the solar statement that has, again, identified the goals that the city has for what to review and what that might look like. Following that, in order to achieve what's called P1 or permitting, there is a prerequisite to create and make available an online checklist that would detail the steps for a community, for someone in the community, whether that's residential or commercial, to apply for and install solar. Everything from what does, what kind of permits are required, what kind of zoning needs to be considered, but then also where are the installers and, you know, who, who can assist. So that's a, an early step in the process to sort of create that online checklist and put it on the city's website. The second prerequisite in order to achieve that bronze status is the planning, zoning, and development, or PZD1 requirement. And this is a review of the zoning requirements and looking at what restrictions may intentionally or unintentionally prohibit solar development or PV development. I'm in the process of reviewing current code. I'll compile those findings in a memo and then submit it to whomever I'm expected to submit it to, and maybe it's your commission perhaps, or this board is sending appeals, I'm not real sure. You'll have to tell me who. And then review that memo, sign off on it, and then the city receives points towards that PZD1 requirement. Following that, we will also look at other foundational categories, permitting, planning, zoning, and development. There are several smaller points in that that relate back to, to those, those pieces. And then there are special focus categories, which include inspection, any construction codes that might also apply, solar rights, that's anything that might be standing in the way of a consumer's right to install solar, as well as utility engagement and community engagement. That includes everything from community solar projects or solar co-ops, that kind of thing. Those are all engagement tools to foster solar development. Upgrade Ohio spends much of our time already on community engagement, so we bring a lot of that to the table already. So those are the special focus categories. I kind of think of them as, in some ways, brownie points. The broad goal of this is to really assist the government in identifying its, you know, potential barriers, and then anything beyond that is a step in the right direction and above and beyond. As I mentioned before, I guess it's 225 is our total point that we're, we're attempting to get to. The city's already accomplished 30 points. That's, you know, just based on the current activities of the city, where it has already supported solar development, but we have 195 points to go. And in terms of a strategy, my goal is to begin with those prerequisite categories, the review of zoning code and those kinds of things, and then dig into the more special, specialized categories down the road. We have six months, as I said. And the goal would be to achieve the bronze status, if possible, by mid-October, and then aim for that silver designation by December, at the end of this time period. It is in need at this point, that I, I know who I can work with somewhat directly on some of the more nitty-gritty details, but I'm happy also to present to the commission if it's more of a group decision at times. And as I mentioned before, I'm currently reviewing zoning code and compiling information for that online checklist, so all of that will be ready for your review as soon as early August. That covers the basics, and I do have a SoulSmart email, which I promise to try to check, but I more directly am reachable at sarah@upgradeohio.org, so both ways work, however. So yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I'm interested to hear your feedback on that.
Are there any questions right now?
I have a few comments.
Absolutely.
I recognize, and we love solar here, we do, as we know, and we're Athens, but achieving the silver with some of those, what I viewed as requirements in there, may, may be a little difficult. The solar byright, I mean, we, as a commission, we've already had legislation in the State of Ohio come to us that stated you have to allow these microcell wireless towers wherever, you know? So we're actually engaged in legal, with legal counsel regarding that. We're protesting that because we feel that we still retain the rights to our public right-of-way, so.
Sure.
That's a comment. And then the timeline in there for three days. I get that that may be an ultimate goal, but everything that we do has a process and a review process, and utility looks at in different divisions. So, so that's my Debbie Downer comments to start with.
Absolutely. And I do think that we, working together, can, you know, take this to whatever place the city would like to go. And if it doesn't make sense after review to pursue the byright, I think that's perfectly fine. And, you know, I think we're, we're in a good position to look at all the options and then, you know, see what, what barriers continue to exist. And that, that three-day permitting time is a sort of national standard that the Solar Foundation believes makes the most sense for streamlining the process. But again, we will look at it from, you know, our standpoint and determine what makes sense for us. I mean, we, there is as many models out there for solar zoning and permitting and planning and development as there are cities around us. So I think we can really take a long look at what, what options we have and go where we need to go.
So your report will have stuff like that, will have best practices that you see in other comparable cities?
Absolutely.
In the State of Ohio and nationally?
I can definitely do State of Ohio and nationally. State of Ohio, I mean, we, we will be among the leaders in terms of, or pioneers in terms of having solar code. It is somewhat uncommon currently across the country.
Okay.
So, but certainly I'll, I'll bring together some models and...
And could you share with us the solar statement? It's interesting that you applied and received this and had a statement. I don't know who drafted that.
I did.
Oh, you know?
I did.
Oh, good, yeah. Mayor did, all right.
I didn't want to say Steve did, but...
No, it was a collaborative.
Okay.
It was, it was interesting, this is going back, what, two or three, maybe four months ago?
I think it started in March.
Thank you. As a reminder, because I'm sitting there looking at that and going, this looks really familiar, that there was a online check, you know, checklist where you're sitting there, you know, being asked questions like, you know, do you have a body that looks at sustainability and, and alternative energies? Well, Sustainability Commission fit that bill, and so that was accepted. And just kind of go through and, and see where you land. And it was just kind of a first whack at, when this all rolled out. I think most of the SOPEC members for the Council of Governments also did the same thing. I believe that Gary Guzman from Mayor of Amesville, I know that County Commissioner Schmiehl also filled out that survey to see where they would land. So it was, that was an interesting exercise unto itself to go through and see, because we, it was an interesting pointing system, just with this initial assessment, where we kind of came in at silver, but I kind of questioned that, I think. I don't know what I answered, you know, how this really works.
It was an interesting process that they created. They wanted you to sort of gauge your own solar readiness as a community, and then the experts took a look at it and said, well, clearly you would like to be, you know, the most solar-friendly community, and maybe in your mind you are, but at the same time there are obvious, you know, structural barriers that continue to stand in the way, and that's what the program is designed to, to reduce. So, so yeah, I thought it was, I thought you're, actually you did a pretty accurate job applying, you know, what, where we currently are to what, you know, we'd like to do, to be. And, and yeah, again, this is one of these initiatives that I believe, you know, during my training, we learned a lot about how nationally we face a lot of barriers to solar development beyond just the, the cost of solar. I mean, the cost includes so many very, you know, the hardware costs and construction costs and installation labor costs, but then these soft costs that are everything from the permitting and the administrative overhead, the marketing, those are the costs that we can really try to slim back on and narrow down so that, you know, we, we can get closer to a place where it makes economic sense for, for solar to be developed in mass.
And, you know, given that we're the only rural?
I know.
In this national program, I think that we have a real opportunity to kind of push ourselves a little bit more in trying to streamline and think this through, because, you know, moving forward, as this program moves forward, we become the benchmark for rural communities, which doesn't exist. So I, I just, I encourage us all to kind of stretch ourselves a little bit and figure out how we can possibly do this. I think this is a good program. I think that, once again, the city of Athens can be in the forefront with how we go about doing things, much as we were 25 years ago with curbside recycling, which is such a great program. So it's, so I think this is, this is a great endeavor. I think, let's get it right.
And I want to underscore, we certainly will not be, you know, I, I will go where you want to go with this, you know? And wherever it makes sense and, you know, is a prudent decision for the city, I think, you know, I'll be right there to help you through it, so.
It's important that you're looking at like the board, what would be board of zoning appeals? I mean, you may dive into this code and never come out because of accessory structures, and we recently had, wasn't there a case recently, Devil's Kettle?
Two, two cases.
Couple cases that have to go, because of accessory structure language in the code, have to come through the board of zoning appeals to allow the, the solar arrays to be erected, so.
Yeah. In fact, I have reviewed both of those cases, and it is clear that they are golden opportunities. It was very relevant to hear them, hear the board express interest in reviewing the code and saying, why don't we have language about solar in this? And where can we be more explicit? So they seem very open to opportunities for, for improvement. So that was, that was really exciting. Glad.
I think the door's open, you know? I think we just need to walk through it. So let's figure it out.
And as a homeowner that installed a solar array on the roof?
A homeowner who's trying to install one, but there isn't enough capacity on the pole. So there are some other structures that you have not encountered. AEP.
Yes. Utility engagement is a piece of our special focus category, and I...
Then they said they won't do it because there are only two people on it, my existing one and the additional one. It's not worth putting in a, whatever it is they need to put in.
Interesting.
So, I mean, I'm a Debbie Downer, too. I mean, it's the real world, but it's not up there yet, is it?
Certainly. No, I...
This is where, sorry, Sarah.
No, please, go ahead.
I mean, this is where, again, as a community, we push that envelope as a collective, as opposed to, unfortunately, you end up having to try and take on AEP by yourself, but let's...
I'm a stockholder, I just put...
Yes, so am I. But let's, let's work this, you know? I, I think we have some real opportunities to leverage a lot of different things with, with AEP, with whomever.
And we have that franchise agreement. Not that we've been able to include too much modifications, but this is another...
Cutting down trees.
Yeah, trees.
Yeah. And AEP does recognize that the times are a change in for their generation, and they're shedding assets and looking at new strategies. And there's a commitment to, to put renewable development in southeast Ohio and Appalachian Ohio. I think the more solar-friendly we seem as a city, or we are as a city, that's, that is all the better for them to say, okay, yeah, this is a place where we want to make investments. And so it's, it's really all running in the right direction, and glad to be helping out for that team.
Does the solar-operated big-belly trash receptacles count in the public right-of-way? Can we, can we...
I will most definitely find out how we can get at least five points for the solar big bellies. Absolutely. They're incredible.
And like the water treatment plant upgrades, the municipal pool, not that we got to solar necessarily in the municipal pool, but...
On-site chlorine generation?
Yeah.
So we're, we're doing things, so, yeah.
Absolutely.
But it's, now it's code. It's trying to streamline things when it comes to solar.
Well, I guess, it sounds like your most immediate need is a point person to work with. Is that right? So is that something that, well, I mean, so is that something we should talk about, or is that being handled administratively?
We, we have a meeting with you on, on August 1st.
Excellent.
Yes. Sarah and her colleague Matt Roberts are going to meet with Sustainability Commission in their August meeting. Yeah, we're, we're working through all that. Sarah's, we, Sarah and I have worked together on several projects over the last eight or nine years.
Okay. That's great. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something that we needed to address to get things moving forward.
No. We heard not a clear, the mayor wants, if the mayor supports something, that means we're going to be working on it.
Wait a minute. Absolutely.
Part of our responsibility, that's all taken care of.
Yeah. And I will, as you said, present to the other commissioners, too. I just want everyone to know that it's happening and where you can support it.
Great. Are there any other questions, comments?
Thank you very much.
Next in communications would be bylaws and rules of order. And we have a draft in front of everybody.
I think everybody has a copy except Patty. My apologies for Patty. I put this together, I think at the last meeting or a month ago, I said I would try to put a draft together. I did start, what I thought would be the best thing to do would be to just start with a basic draft, and then we can make some tweaks based on how we think this organization should be run, especially how the five of you think. A lot of the substance in this draft, I did borrow from the city of Oxford, Ohio. Planning commissions as far as how they are addressed, et cetera, it is all the same. Planning commissions as far as how they are addressed, et cetera, it is all the same regardless, it's, their responsibilities are the same regardless of whether they're charter cities or statute cities in the state of Ohio, they're all, they all fall under High Revised Code 713. And so this was our start, a lot of this is things we don't, we've never discussed any of this in the past, really, about how we handle things.
Present.
I'm not sure how you guys would like to proceed, if this is something to distribute and comment in August.
Yeah, I, I think before the next Planning Commission meeting that we all sit and digest this and make our markups and our additions.
One thing I did want to just mention briefly, I looked, we had a whole bunch of these that we put together, and I started looking through them and I started looking through a few others. Oxford's actually, what really struck me, and I saw this with a lot of other cities, is that a lot of cities have one Planning Commission meeting per month, so maximum 12 per year, and in Oxford, and I saw this with a few others, and, so this would be page three of the document, Article 7, business procedures. I put for Section 1 how we handle it, how we more or less have handled things historically, 15 days prior to a meeting. Oxford, for example, all documents must be submitted 45 days prior to being put on the agenda, and again, that's one, one meeting per month, and so how that would work in a place like Oxford is the staff would receive everything on day one, and on day 15, the Planning Commission would receive documents from the staff at a regular meeting, and then on day 45 would be a meeting where they would, the applicants would actually come before the commission. I'm not recommending we do that, but it's just to point out that we, one of the things we've done historically is try to work really quickly with applicants to get them through in a, in a quick pace, and what I've seen with a lot of other cities, larger cities and equally sized cities, is that you might, you might sit around for 90 days or longer to actually even get on an agenda, because once the agenda starts loading up, the Planning Commission reserves the right to say, that's two, we've got, we already have three cases, each case is going to take 45 minutes or so, we're not going to meet for five hours, and so we're going to move you to the next one.
So something like the Shade Tree Commission, as far as going before them, would, in this sense, be folded into the information that needs to be present to us, you know, prior?
Right.
As opposed to following behind us in many instances that I've seen where we do pending approval from the Shade Tree Commission, that information, they would need to get that in front.
I believe you've changed that process.
Well, and then, this is, this is how it works out, I'll give you an example, I won't use Menards, but an upcoming one, which is Oak U. Dermatology, they're going to come for communications in the next meeting, and in between that is the Shade Tree, then the next meeting for Planning Commission. So what I've done is I've contacted Shade Tree Commissioner, Chairperson, and told them they have 24 days to review the Shade Tree, to do the Shade Tree, at which case it would provide for, you have communications, so the next meeting they could do Title 41, and we would have that information back from the Shade Tree for that meeting. I'm pressing to test on this, so we don't have an incident like we had before for such an extended period of time, because of the way the schedule, the meetings are scheduled. Some of the times, what we tried to, and I've had several contractors comment on that fact that we process things rather quickly compared to Columbus, but that's a larger city, and comparatively, they commend us on processing things rather rapidly, and they do say they sit for 60, sometimes 90 days at other areas, trying to get through their processes. So I would hate to lose that, but then again, I sometimes do send things to you a few days in advance, which probably doesn't give you enough time to review the overall situation, but that's, again, that we're just trying to process these things to work with the contractors.
Sure.
So that's where we're kind of at.
Sure, I, you know, my view of this is that Shade Tree meets, to remind everyone, Shade Tree meets currently once a month, Board of Zoning Appeals meets once a month, you know, if it has to go that route, whereas the Planning Commission, as we all know, we meet, you know, every other week, and I think that, kind of for me personally, the misalignment is that they should be meeting twice, you know, twice a month as well to help better align and streamline things, it's like we're the streamlined end because we do meet every other week, and things come through. I also want to just briefly comment, I could be wrong, but, you know, the mention that other cities, the bigger cities, the timeframe tends to be longer, they also have building code offices, so a lot is being internal anyway as it's moving through that process where we don't. So on the developer's end, they've got to go get their state permits, you know, granted they've gone through the process the right way, and then it comes through.
And in the same, in the same voice, the state, sometimes we have to wait for the state permits to get to us, they present a preliminary plan, and somehow that get, might get changed in the process, so we have to bring it back, or in short notice, we apply, we send it forward to the commissioners.
Right, and so, planning meeting twice a month helps with that too, to where you're not having to wait another cycle again, which makes things long and delay.
Correct.
Now, would that be council, or who would add that, the additional meetings?
Well, I'm also sensitive to the fact that all of our boards and commissions are volunteer citizen-based, and so it's, that's a, I think that's a conversation for another day, to talk about the others, but I just wanted to put that out there. I will say this, is that the Board of Zoning Appeals, as well as Shade Tree, will hold special sessions if need be, you know, if there's an issue of times, time sensitiveness with things going forward, which they've done in the past, and I appreciate that.
So we'll go through this for the next meeting? Do we want to try to tackle the entire draft in one meeting, or just get as far as we can get, just leave it that way?
Okay.
Would you like, I'll send a Word document to each of you as well, in case you prefer track changes or something like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, appreciate your work on this.
Sure.
You're welcome.
That's great.
Let's see, report from the city planner, Mr. Loeb?
The only thing I think I should report this morning or this afternoon, we, my intern, Richard Linscott, and I will be starting a Uptown Parking study, well, we are starting it, next week, he is coordinating meetings with Uptown Business Owners and Business Managers to have one-on-one discussions with them, so to better understand how Uptown, what Uptown Parking issues they have, but also to better understand how their employees use Uptown Parking, how they use Uptown Parking, how their customers use it, things that they hear, and how delivery drivers use Uptown Parking, so we're going to be working through all those things, we're, he's going to try to do interviews with as many of these business owners and managers as possible, starting Monday for about three weeks, we've already, we just sent out an email announcement yesterday through the Chamber of Commerce to help move it along, and I think we've already heard back from four or five business owners asking to schedule for next week, so we're starting that, it's going to go on through the fall, I'll be working with the government channel staff to help do drone flights, so we can see how Parking rotates Uptown, how often we can do a drone flight on a fixed route, like every hour, on the hour during a regular business day, a weekend, and maybe a peak Saturday, looking at a football game Saturday, or mom's weekend or dad's weekend type thing, so we can see what kind of demand we have, and then we're going to hopefully get some counters, temporary counters installed in the parking garage, so we can track how vehicles are coming in and out of that building, so we better understand how much, what capacity is like, and what average usage of, what a peak hour is like in the parking garage, and then, of course, make some recommendations. All of this, we're treating this as part of the comprehensive planning process, as kind of a unique project that we've heard a lot about, we all, people all have opinions about Uptown Parking and perceptions about it, so we thought this was something we could start on right now, with a lot of people that were interested in really talking about it, so that's going on. Several of us will be in Oxford next Thursday, or a week from today, for the Ohio Town and Gown Association meeting, so that's coming up as well.
Any questions, comments?
Just a comment, the Uptown Business Association meeting, when Paul brought forward this Parking assessment, was really well-received, as a matter of fact, a lot of them agreeing to be interviewed on the business.
Yeah, yeah, people were, yeah, I mean, all the emails we've received so far, people were pleased that we wanted to look into it, and we don't just want to hear about what people's issues are, but we're really hoping some of these people would have some suggestions on things they, they might, changes we might be able to make, some of the things we've already heard just through the Uptown Business Association meeting was the possibility of having a few meters scattered that are only for like 10 minutes, so if somebody just needs to run in to do a, to go to an ATM machine really quick, or to pick up carryout food, or a cup of coffee, or something like that, or a prescription, that they're not jockeying for the same positions as somebody who wants to sit for two hours in a parking meter. And we always hear issues about employees utilizing Uptown Parking space as well at the expense of customers, so we've heard about those.
The other thing is that we, we did receive the Active Transportation Grant with the Health Department, and that was supposed to be a pedestrian walkability, you know, so will you be incorporating that in as well?
I'm not sure how we're going to handle that yet, I'm not sure when that study's going to even start, actually, but, yeah, we'll make sure they line up.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Loeb, Mr. Saroy.
As I mentioned before, Oak U. Dermatology will be presented in communication at the next meeting, and we will also be attending the Town and Gown, that's all I have, thank you.
Oak U. Dermatology will be presented at the next...
Anything for Mr. Saroy? Are we good there? Okay, thank you. Opportunities for citizens to speak in our live audience, does anybody wish to comment, to make comments to the Planning Commission? Okay, thank you. Did you want to recognize?
I do.
Thank you.
We do have a special guest here today, we have members from Athens Troop 77 here, and I really appreciate the fact that you were able to stay awake through the Planning Commission meeting, but I'm really appreciative of the fact that you're here today to get to listen to Soul Smart, and, you know, as young as you are, you know, I'm sure that you're growing up in a world to where we're looking at alternative forms of energy, and hopefully you'll, you'll jump into the fray of putting, getting solar out there, or any form of renewable energies, so thank you for coming today.
Thank you very much. Any announcements or other business? Okay, our next meeting will be August 3rd, 2017, here in the City Hall, and with the Athens City Planning Commission business concluded, this meeting stands adjourned, thank you very much.